Good afternoon, full of chambers. How you doing? My name is Nick Maddox, Chairman Leon County Commission. Let the record show that we call this regular commission meeting to order at 3:01 PM on September the 12th, 2023. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance by, I'm sorry, invocation. I'll let Commissioner Comban introduce who's doing the invocation, and then Commissioner Comban will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our invocation will be provided by Brother Dennis Young from Bible Believers Fellowship Church located in our Fort Brading community. He is joined today by his wife Linda and lifelong friend Jamie Holloman. Welcome, Brother Young. Thank you.
At the podium. Could we all stand for the invocation, please? Thank you.
Would you please bow your heads with us some more, please? Mother, how grateful we are today just to be able to call the name of Jesus in the house. And we ask now, Lord, that you'd take control over the things that are done that'll honor you and encourage others. And Father, we want to give you the praise for who you are. And I thank you, Lord, for the great people here in our county. And thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to say one more time, there's nothing like Jesus in your life. And we all said, amen. Amen.
Mr. Comban.
Pledge of Allegiance. This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We'll start now at the top of the agenda with proclamations. First proclamation will be presented by myself to, actually, I have the first two proclam-- well, actually, just the first proclamation. Will be presented by myself, recognizing Brenda Williams, Director of the Tallahassee Housing Authority. Ms. Williams, if you would meet me at the podium. All right. Those of you who are into affordable housing and subsidized housing know how much of a giant this community Brenda Williams is. She's one of my idols. She was able to take our Orange Avenue Apartments from what it was, let's see, how many years ago? About four, five years ago?
Five.
About five years ago into something that's going to be brand new for those folks to live in and matches any other complex in the town that we help. In this home that we call Tallahassee, I'm so proud of the work that she's done to do that. I'm sure that's in here, but I wanted to say that myself. Whereas the Tallahassee Housing Authority is a quasi-governmental agency established by the City of Tallahassee to provide affordable housing to low-income residents through public housing developments, as well as the HUD Housing Choice Voucher Program. And whereas in December 2016, THA partnered with Columbia Residential to develop a master plan for the redevelopment of Orange Avenue Apartments in the effort to address the community's highest affordable housing needs. When was Orange Avenue built?
1971.
Built 1971, being 50 years ago, and now it's going to be brand new. That's pretty outstanding. Whereas the redevelopment of the property will increase the number of affordable rental units in the community in the current property more than 100% from 200 units to 410 units over four phases. And whereas the THA Executive Director Brenda Williams has worked previously to coordinate the project's design, funding, and execution, both in-house and with THA's partners. And whereas with the very, with the financial support of both Leon County and City of Tallahassee, and through the tireless work of its team, THA was able to hold a groundbreaking ceremony for Orange Avenue Apartments redevelopment in October 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Leon County, Florida, that we recognize the Tallahassee Housing Authority and Ms. Brenda Williams for its continued dedication to affordable housing in the Tallahassee-Leon community, as well as Executive Director Brenda Williams for her leadership and her initiative. This is dated today, September 12, 2023, signed by myself, as well as the rest of the commission, and attested to by the county administrator.
This was a surprise. I want to thank the county commission for your support over the past five years, as well as the county administration. Your support of affordable housing has been unwavering, and I look forward to working with you in the future to provide more affordable housing for the residents of Leon County.
All right. Any commissioners want to speak? Yes, Mr. --
Chairman, we are excited in District One to see the improvement there. My mother declared the other day when I was passing by that area, she hadn't been in that direction in a while, that it looked so nice. And she said, this is not affordable housing, whatever that looks like. But she declared that it looked as contemporary and upbeat, upscale as any place in the city. So we commend Sister Brenda, and also to note that Secretary Marcia Fudge, the National Secretary of Department of Housing and Urban Development, thought it not robbery when she was graduation speaker at FAMU in August, I mean, in July, whenever it was. The Secretary of the United States Housing and Urban Development came to that site and pinned roses and laid out praise and said that it represented the model of which the Biden administration was attempting to do with capable partners across the United States. So I think that while I didn't hear that in the resolution, I wanted to state that she has been affirmed by the Secretary of Housing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Immediate Pass. Madam Vice Chair, and then I'll come to you, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to echo Commissioner Proctor's accolades for Ms. Williams. Congratulations to her and to the entire staff for all of the hard work that they have done to address our housing issue and homelessness in our community. I had the privilege a couple of weeks ago to tour that complex, and I want you to know it is top-notch, it's second to none. They even, there are plans, of course, to have a senior citizen complex adjacent to the main complexes. And I say, well, maybe they might allow me to rent one at some point, but it's just that nice. So I just want to congratulate Ms. Williams and her staff for all the hard work that they have done for our community, and especially for our low-income community to provide very, very high standard of living with that housing development that's going up on Orange Avenue. And I mean, when you drive down Orange Avenue, it's just a totally different look for our South Side. So thank you and congratulations again.
Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Ms. Williams, I just wanted to thank you and your team for everything you're doing. I'm going to try to add and not repeat. You know, one thing that Commissioner Proctor mentioned with the HUD Secretary Fudge visiting us, she would not come to Tallahassee and visit the Orange Avenue Apartments if it were not an excellent example of what we want to achieve and what the U.S. Housing and Urban Development wants to achieve as well. So, Ms. Williams, where are you? Okay, there you are. I just want to thank you for that. That alone, the fact that she would come and visit us and tour Orange Avenue Apartments, is a great testament to all the work that you and your team are doing. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just say I think that it's premature for Commissioner Cummings to make application for senior housing. Thought you had to be at least 100.
If not, I'll say I'm particularly proud of the way in the folks that Orange Avenue Apartments serve. I've gotten a real good education in affordable housing since I've taken over as CEO of Family Promise with Big Ben. One of the things that struck me biggest is $81,000 is our median, average income. Half of that is where we're struggling the most when it comes to folks being able to find reliable housing. When you think about half of that, we're talking about $40,000, $500,000. Our teachers make $47,000 starting out. Think about the folks who work for the organizations who make that kind of money. Those folks are having a hard time finding affordable rentals and affordable homes to buy. And what Orange Avenue Apartments and what Tallahassee Housing Authority and others are doing is providing for those folks a place that they can call home, that they can afford to call home, they can still save, and one day achieve that American dream of being able to buy a house because they can pay a rent that allows them to save. So Brenda, thank you so much for what you've done for our community. You brought it all the way from New, I think it was New Orleans, right? Brought it all the way from New Orleans to here, but you had a goal when you got here of redeveloping that property, and here we are here today, and not too long from now, we'll have folks living there, and it'll be because of your vision. So thank you so much for what you've done for our community. All right. We're moving now to the next proclamation. Proclamation recognizing Florida State University Women's Softball Team as runner-up in the World College World, I'm sorry, the Women's College World Series, presented by Commissioner Could the team and the representatives from the athletic department meet Commissioner Yes, it should be. Tap it, tap it.
You got to do your outfield voice.
Yeah, I know. There it is, there it is. Before I present the proclamation, I want to introduce some of the people here from our Florida State family to accept it. We have Athletic Director Michael Alford and his wife Laura, Deputy Athletic Director Cindy Hartman, we have Head Coach Lonnie Alameda, and coaching staff Travis Wilson, Troy Cameron, Kaylee Rafter, and Ellie Cooper. We have the current roster for the Florida State Seminoles softball team, along with Mac Leonard, Ali Dubois, and Jose Muffly. Whereas the Florida State University Seminoles softball team defeated Georgia, advancing them to the Women's College World Series Championship. And whereas the Florida State University Seminoles softball team battled for the national title beginning on June 1st, 2023, in Oklahoma City. And whereas the Florida State University Seminoles softball team entered the College World Series as a number three seed. And whereas the Florida State University Seminoles softball team had their first-ever 2-0 start in the Women's College World Series after defeating Washington, advancing them to the national semifinals. Whereas the Florida State University Seminoles softball team defeated Tennessee 5-1 to advance them to the Women's College World Series Finals, where they would take on the number one seed, Oklahoma. And whereas for the second time in program history, the Florida State University Seminoles softball team ended their 2023 season as the national runners-up at the Women's College World Series. And whereas the Florida State University Seminoles softball team finished their impressive season with 58 wins and 11 losses. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County that we recognize the Florida State University Seminoles softball team's heart, perseverance, and grit that earned them the 2023 National Runners-Up Title in the Women's College World Series. Furthermore, we express our gratitude for the positive impact the team's efforts, dedication, and sportsmanship have on our Tallahassee and Leon County community. Dated this 12th day of September 2023, signed by the Board of County Commissioners and the County Administrator. Would you like to give some remarks?
Sure.
And this is for you. You're welcome. Yes, yes.
To the commission, this is awesome. Christian, thank you so much. This is really cool. And Mr. Alford, who's been a superfan of ours, and Laura with her cookies, superfan. So thank you for everything. There's so many special moments throughout the season, on and off the field. And on the field, I mean, the seniors represent Team 40, which is some of our returning players behind us sitting, but this is a special one off the field. When I think of the word "community" and we talk about community, there's unity in it. And when we got off that plane and came back from Oklahoma City, it was super special to see how many people, parents, children, grandparents, family members, staff members, everybody to support us. So we're really proud to represent this community and to be a part of it. And, you know, we're lucky that our softball games continue to be supported by people here in Tallahassee and a little bit outside of Tallahassee, too, because it gives all of our players a sense of home, and we really, really, really appreciate that. We're also very prideful for representing softball and women's sports, and that's something that we all been pushing the needle on and trying to give opportunity for all kinds, all ages, all sizes, all demographics, to be able to play at a high level, and softball really represents that. And I know we all take a lot of pride in that part of it, and so it was really special for us to be able to see that in the faces when we came home. So thank you for today. We're going to have a little ice cream social after we get home, because we always celebrated during the season with some ice cream. And so, sorry, I didn't bring it up for you, but it was a little pouring outside, but we appreciate you all and everything that you do for our city, so.
Can we take a picture?
Yes, of course.
Can we take a picture of that?
Ms. Chairman, is Mr. Alford going to tell us anything about anything like this, Athletic Director?
Of course, you can speak. I think we'll take the picture and then we'll give him an opportunity. I got a couple of questions for him myself.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, he wants us to?
Yeah, no, we're standing here. All right, I got a bunch of commissioners that want to speak, and I think then they want to probably hear from my Athletic Director. If you don't mind, I'll speak first. Coach, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Proud of you guys.
You ready to give us all the good news? You ready to give us all the good news up there? Just that we're winning football games. So listen, first things first, I wanted to just take a moment to recognize, I did want to recognize Athletic Director. Since he's come in, we've had a stout athletic program, but if you look at where we are now athletically, not just one sport, but collectively as an organization athletically, we are pretty strong. And that does not happen without a good Athletic Director, good Athletic Department, and great coaches that's brought in by the Athletic Director, that's able to recognize that talent. So I want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Alford for what he's doing for our program and ask that you will keep that up. And I heard some rumors swirling around that she's thinking about different things, different places, not that stuff.
Just rumors.
Okay, all right.
Tallahassee's home forever.
Yes, sir. What was yours?
Well, I just want to thank all the commissioners for all their support of not only our athletic department, but our university. It is such a vital part of this community, and we feed off each other. And we understand how important our partnership is in this community and the support that y'all give us. I just want to thank all of y'all for all the support, because our 550 to 600 student athletes feel the love from this community every time they go out and participate. So I just want to thank y'all for your support, and we're open to anything that we can ever do to assist.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm out of interference. Wait, I ain't done yet, Bill. So the other thing I wanted to say, I'm going to come to you. This is a Florida State team, I got to speak. Other thing, so listen, for you athletes out there, I know what it takes to be a champion, and I know what it's like to be a freshman on a championship team. One of the biggest things when I was, when Coach called for the seniors--
Commissioner.
Yes.
Y'all don't know, he played tailback for us.
A long, long time ago, y'all. I was much smaller, much faster.
Was a very outstanding football player.
And now he's embellishing. So when Coach asked for the seniors to come up, and they came up, and there wasn't a face that was unhappy about their seniors, those seniors coming up, it told me the character of the team that you got. Because a lot of times, it could be a senior that may not be the star of the team, but is a senior and deserves the same respect as the rest of the seniors and the rest of the players on the team do, but most of all because they put in the work. I know that there's no way you're runner-up nationally without a preseason from hell. I know the work that you guys put in during the offseason in order to get there, and none of the folks that are here will ever actually really be able to appreciate that or have seen that the way I've seen it. And I want to let you know that that does not go unnoticed by an athlete who's played at the level that you play at. And so, last but not least, being a part of the team does not just prepare you to be a part of another team, it prepares you to be a part of organizations. What most people think is, don't get about athletes, are we are the absolute best when it comes to being an employee, when it comes to being a leader, because we've worked in organizations throughout our whole lives since we were children. And so, don't just think when you're looking at your playbook, when you're doing your workouts, when you're being disciplined every day, when you're doing the things that you have to do to be the best athlete that you can possibly be on the field, that those things don't translate to being the best whatever you want to be off the field. We don't make that transition well because we don't see it. But we are not just champions on the field, but we're champions off the field if we can just take that work ethic and that discipline that we have, and we can apply that to our professional lives, whether it be politics or business, or we want to be a teacher, whatever it is. We are programmed to be the absolute best at whatever we decide to do, whatever we decide to do. So I wish you all luck, not just on the field, but off the field and everything that you decide that you want to do in this lifetime. All right, commissioners, I have Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. You know, you don't get to where you are without being versatile, and so I had a question to ask you. This is a different sport, but I hear that the New York Jets are looking for a new quarterback this season. Any takers? There you go, Chairman Maddox. Listen, when FSU does well, this community does well, and that applies to our research and development, that applies to our graduates and our faculty, and it applies in a big way to our sports teams. And let me tell you this, the image that you have, the inspiration you provide to young girls in this community is off the charts. I have two young girls, and we've taken them to some of your games. And to have me try to explain how baseball, softball works to a four-year-old is something you don't want to hear, but I can't tell you how much your success inspires everybody, people you never met and will never meet, but that you do. And so, thank you for everything that you do. Thanks to FSU. This is a, you are a huge part of this community. When you are successful, we are successful. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Alford, Coach Alameda, team, just wanted to, you know, tell you guys how proud we are of you. I see a lot of faces I was cheering for from my television set back when you guys were in Oklahoma City, and I'm jealous of you. You've got, at this point, can we call you an iconic coach? I mean, you know, the success that you've had is unprecedented, and I'm jealous because you got a great coach, and you get to go to Director Alford's office and get chocolate chip cookies from his wife that are out here absolutely fire. You guys have done so good for so long, and you are a testament to furthering that success. And again, as the father of two daughters, you know, it makes us so proud to see you go out there and represent not just our beloved university, but our community in Leon County and Tallahassee so well. And y'all are just, you know, like, what was the pitcher from Oklahoma, the lefty at the last game, that was so good?
Jordy.
Oh, she a riding? Jordy, yeah. Listen, incredible player, right? But you guys gave her so much business, she had to leave, right? She went to Nebraska, right? So take some comfort in that. So congratulations on a great year. Thank you for everything you do, and thank you for making all of us in this community so proud.
All right. Mr. Immediate Pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this offer, there's no doubt that this team, I believe this was the 50th year anniversary of Title IX, and nothing validates the embracement of Title IX, as does the resources, the coaching, and those things which have been argued in the past have not been presented to the female collegiate teams. But this speaks to Florida State's commitment to Title IX, and that resource has been placed there that your students, our students, are performing at the highest level. That's the first thing. Secondly, Mr. Alford, Ms. Carrie Post, Carrie, wave your hand. The Tourist Development Council, we feed off of this time of year in particular, projections about retail matters across this community. That does not include pubs and the nighttime dollars, just talking about beds, heads and beds. One of the things I said to Carrie is that once Florida State, aside from softball, that over the years I have talked about price gouging, but once LSU got smashed the other day, I told Carrie I will not say anything this year about price gouging, because there's a thing called by popular demand. And we're very, very pleased with all that's projected from the economic impacts which all of the teams make, and as a member representing our board on the Tourist Development Council, we get to measure it in very concrete ways. Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Alford, Madam Coach, the entire softball team, seniors, and otherwise, I want you to know that it's the only woman on this dais. I am especially, especially proud of you all's accomplishment. I didn't play basketball, softball, wasn't a student athlete at all in college, but I did, I did, I played in the band, symphonic and marching band. So I would have been right there on the sidelines playing for you guys' success. But you all are true champions, you work hard, it showed in your athleticism, and just continue. You know, know that we here in Leon County are so proud of you. We support the university, Director Alford, in every way that we can, and you all bring vibrancy to our city, to our county. We appreciate all of our young people that are just involved in so many ways on campus. So know that we will support you if at once you don't truly succeed, what we say, try, try again. So we're going to continue to pray that you all will achieve the ultimate in the World Series on the next go-around. So thank you very much for making Leon County and Tallahassee so proud, and for making us look really good to the world. Thank you.
I have Commissioner, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just congratulations. We couldn't be more proud of you, and I appreciate y'all maybe missing practice to come down, get this proclamation, and just say that I'm looking forward to more of your success in the future where I get to see y'all play in Major League Softball League that is as big and pay as expensive tickets as Major League Baseball in the future.
Thank you, sir. Madam Vice Chair, my mom told me if a person don't succeed, you fry a hen. you fry a hen. That's what she told me. So look, thank you guys for coming out today. We wish you guys luck in next year. And again, put in the work, and you'll get the results. Next, we have a proclamation from Commissioner Welch to recognize September 2023 as Hunger Action Month. Okay. Hey, before you, before you, before you go, the county administrator told me that I might want to let you guys, the team, know and Coach, and Mr. Alford and Miss, that you guys are free to go. You can stay for the whole meeting if you want, might be here for a while.
I disagree. I think you guys should stay for the rest of the meeting.
Ice cream is calling you, so. Yes, yes.
All right, is there anybody from Second Harvest here to stand with me and receive this proclamation? As you guys may or may not know, September 2023, hey, how are you? Good to see you. Yeah, is Hunger Action Month. So, you know, the, the role of the county in helping Second Harvest facilitate their mission is vital, and, and I'm proud to offer this proclamation in recognition of September 2023 as Hunger Action Month. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Leon County, where 62,000 people face hunger and one in three children do not know where their next meal will come from. And whereas Leon County, Florida is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community, and to provide additional resources that those in Leon County need. And whereas Leon County is committed to working with Second Harvest of the Big Bend, a member of the Feeding America nationwide network of food banks, in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas 2.2 million Floridians lack proper food access, of those, over 660,000 are children. And whereas Second Harvest of the Big Bend and similar food banks across the state are still seeing increased demand from families struggling to afford groceries and dealing with other financial woes. Whereas in 2022, Second Harvest of the Big Bend distributed 14 million pounds of food throughout their 11-county service area, including 6.5 million pounds in Leon County. And whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities, and to engage the public in action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations, to ensure nobody has to make an impossible choice between food and other necessities like medicine, utilities, or childcare. And whereas food banks across the country, including the members of Feeding Florida, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their local communities, that now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, that we recognize September 2023 as Hunger Action Month in Leon County. Thank you so much for being here. I know Commissioner Minor has a, has a unique history with Second Harvest, and certainly we saw that work come to action and come to life during the Hurricane Idalia response that was going on in our neighboring counties. So thank you so much. If you'd like to offer some words, that'd be great.
All right. Thank you, County Commissioners, County Administration, for your support. We couldn't do it without everyone's support. In addition to this being the month of Hunger Action Awareness Month, actually, this Friday is Hunger Action Day, and if you want to help spread awareness, you can wear orange on that day. But we appreciate everyone, and we'll keep doing our best.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mrs. Director. I just want to commend Second Harvest for all that you do in our community. I know Second Harvest joined with the Children's Services Council this summer to make sure none of our children went hungry during the summer. So you guys are dedicated to addressing the hunger in all segments of our community, and we are staunch supporters. So thank you for all the good work that you do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a point of information. Mr. Welch, did you say that one in six children in Leon County do not know when or where their next meal coming from? Was it one in six?
Um.
First line.
First line, hunger, poverty issues, I mean, every part of the county, early in the county. Uh, one in three, sorry.
Geez. Wow, that's staggering. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jacob, I just want to thank you and Monique and the whole team at Second Harvest for what you do, what you, what you've been able to accomplish, the whole team there, since you and Monique and everybody else started, it's just incredible. So thanks for everything. And I know you're still working right now on response to Hurricane Idalia. So I know that's a heavy load on, on the whole team. But thanks for everything you guys do. We are lucky to have you in the Big Bend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't have any other Commissioners in queue to speak. Thank you so much for, for the contribution you make to our community, especially to our children. That one in three thing is pretty staggering. That backpack program that you guys do, send kids home with, with food every weekend so they have something to eat on. My daughters, I have one that goes to Rikers, and one that goes to, did he kill me? Fairview. She was talking about her friends really enjoy the backpack. So thank you so much for what you, not just what you do for them, but, but for our whole community.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next proclamation will be again presented by Commissioner Welch, presentation recognizing September 30, 2023 as Go Gold Day in support of the Be Bold, Go Gold campaign.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right. Kaitlyn, thank you for joining me. All right. So you guys, you may recall this, around this time last year, we had Kaitlyn Irwin come in and, and, and tell us all about the activities that she has going on. So here we are again, and it's the September of a new year, and, and we're going to issue another proclamation in recognition of Kaitlyn's work with Going Gold in the month of September. So whereas in 2013, Grayson Irwin was diagnosed with pediatric leukemia and began treatment at UF Health Shands Children's Hospital. That is a mouthful.
Yes.
Whereas in 2018, his sister Kaitlyn Irwin began to research why Leon County schools did not have any formal recognition of Going Gold for pediatric cancer awareness. And whereas in 2019, she approached the principal of her school to start the Be Bold, Go Gold campaign at Roberts Elementary while in the fourth grade. And whereas she and the Be Bold, Go Gold campaign would successfully raise $2,500 in its first year through online donations and local partnerships. And whereas by 2022, the Be Bold, Go Gold campaign would raise over $39,000 in its fourth year by increasing local partnerships, expanding its school district footprint, and making an impact with our local nonprofits. And whereas in 2023, the Be Bold, Go Gold campaign continues to grow with events hosted prior to and throughout the month of September culminating with Go Gold Day on September 30. And whereas this year, on September 30, the Leon County Courthouse will be lit up in gold once again to commemorate Go Gold Day in Leon County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we recognize September 30, 2023 as Go Gold Day in Leon County and Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, if you guys recall, last year, Kaitlyn came up here and, and, and you guys hit her up to make some donations. So she's going to give you an update on how they did last year, and, and let you know what the plans are going forward for 2023.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Welch. I just wanted to share a few words why this means so much to me. Well, as he said, when I was three years old, my little brother Grayson was diagnosed with leukemia, a type of blood cancer. He had 365,000 white blood cells. As an average child has 10,000. He is now eight years cancer-free. He reached that. Yes, his eight-year anniversary was August 20th. So, only a little bit, but hey. So I started Be Bold, Go Gold campaign in honor of him. I raised funds for organizations to help kids with pediatric cancer. These organizations are the Hang Tough Foundation, the Trends Touch Foundation, and the Marshall Fisher Young Adults and Adolescents Cancer Research Fund at UF Health Shands. This is a problem that I cannot fix alone, but together we can make a difference. September is Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month, and one of my goals in addition to fundraising was to simply raise awareness in this community. For example, only 4% of cancer funds goes towards pediatric cancer, and yet 24 children in the U.S. are diagnosed with leukemia, or with cancer every day. In the past four years, I've raised $65,000, and last year alone, we raised $42,000. Even more so than the money raised, over the past five years, I have seen our community not only become aware, but beginning to take action on their own. This Commission Board is a prime example. Last year, I reached out to each of you, and I heard back from most of you. You guys gave me a proclamation for Go Gold Day last year, and even lighting this building gold. This year, without me having to ask, Commissioner Brian Welch took it upon himself to go out of his way to give me another proclamation. And you guys unanimously declared September 30 as Go Gold Day. This is what I wanted to see happen. I just wanted to make an impact on this community. This year is going to be my last year in charge of fundraising for this cause, but this has given me hope that this will carry on. So, in order to go out strong, there are several ways that you can participate. First, you can buy a T-shirt. The order closes tomorrow, so make sure you go out and buy them now. Second, we have Share Nights with both Loli and the Bean and Texas Roadhouse this week. Third, Leon County Fundraisers. They've been fundraising all month long by selling popcorn, sports games, doing coin wars, and so much more. Fourth, if Share Nights, sports games, T-shirts aren't your thing, finally, I am, I am asking that we paint our town gold in the month of September by wearing shirts, like, just wear gold. Paint your house gold. I, I don't care. Just go gold. There are many ways we can make this the best Be Bold, Go Gold campaign ever. I'm hopeful to raise $35,000 so that we reach a grand total of $100,000 over the past five years. I believe that we can do this together. And thanks to Morabass Consulting, have heard what I was doing and wanted to get involved, they offered to be my presenting sponsor, and we are already a big part of our way to the goal. Visit beboldgold.com for more information and all the ordering links, and let's be bold and go gold this September.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor. Okay, got you. Yes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Commissioner, can I just? Yes, ma'am. I just want to briefly say that we are just so proud of you. I remember you came last year. Based on your efforts, you're just relentless. We appreciate your dedication to public service. And we know that you're a great public servant just by the work that you do, the money that you raise for a great cause. So congratulations, and we look forward to supporting you and seeing you next year.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a website?
Yes, beboldgold.com.
We'll make sure you guys get it.
Yeah, go gold.com.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you make a donation right now? Is that county attorney, can I give to the gold code? Okay.
You know, you know, they old, old folks carry cash, so.
I heard that remark. That remark, that remark resembles me. See, I got a picture.
You get a picture?
All right. Hey, set the bar high now. Get her up on the dice.
See, you shouldn't go gold, you need to go green. Green.
All right. So next up, I have a proclamation presentation, I'm sorry, presentation on Choose Tallahassee by Greg Patterson. I'm sorry, Patterson. Mr. Patterson, come up and give us a presentation, please, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. And the folks before me, how do I follow that? I mean, that's why people choose Tallahassee. As the, I'm here to share with you what's new with Choose Tallahassee. With Choose Tallahassee, how many of you are aware of Choose Tallahassee? Choose Tallahassee, our mission is to capitalize on our innovation and technology to attract people to our community, you know, anything from incoming students for TCC, entrepreneurs, young professionals, all the way up to seniors. You know, a lot of times, you know, sometimes the news out there, we're the good news outlet for Tallahassee. You know, it's the choosetallahassee.com. How do we do this? We have a website that we expect 100,000 people to come to this year. And we support the recruiting efforts of everyone in Tallahassee. It could be TMH, could be FSU, and they come to our website, and there we capture their lead. And how do we capture their lead? We have five different relocation guides. And I encourage everyone to use that. If you're trying to recruit a family member, or a business or someone to town, you can go online and download our, our relocation guides. And we send an email follow-up, and then what we are able to do with Choose Tallahassee, it's always been, how can you prove how many people have moved here? Because nothing says you must register when you come to town. Well, when you download the relocation guide, you know, we've got, we've got your email. We send you drip emails. And after about six months, we send you an email and say, did you move here? So at that point, you know, just to show our growth, our website traffic was 11,000 in 2020. We expected to be 100,000 this year. Leads generated, that's the number of people that download the relocation guides, is going to be 2,500. And we can now generate an economic, GDP, economic impact of over $4 million just in the last little while. And that's 30 times our annual budget, which I think is a pretty good ROI. You know, more residents equal more skilled level, skilled labor. Yeah, we're kind of talking about being a tech town. I just left a meeting with the Florida Tech Council. I'm going back to that. We're working with LaunchTally to be a tech town with higher paying jobs, more opportunities. And with that, you know, we've got the, we've got the five different relocation guides, which is pretty cool. So we thank you for your support of Choose Tallahassee. Yeah, we work with Carrie over at Visit Tallahassee. We're talking about a lot of good things. We're talking about partnering with the boosters and bringing back alumni. And there's a lot of good reasons why people choose Tallahassee. But I just want to thank you for having me today. Thank you for your support. There's a lot we can do to get people to relocate. And all the people before me, that's why people choose Tallahassee. We got a neat, unique town. But with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Commissioners, we have now to move to citizens to be heard on consent and nunnaging the items. Commissioners, I do have a request that the Immediate Pass has sent me, that there was a request for item five to be pulled. No Commissioners have asked for it to be pulled. Madam Attorney, do we have any kind of rulings there on pulling for the dais?
Well, the Board can waive its policy, but the Board policy is that the request to pull has to be 24 hours in advance.
Any willingness? If not, all right, citizens to be heard.
What was the?
Yes, sir.
Could you go back to that?
So there was a request to have item, item five pulled. We have a policy that items have to be pulled 24 hours before. We could waive the rules and pull the item. If not, we'll go to the county administrator to hear the citizens that would then be addressing not just consent, but nunnaging the items, if we're not going to waive the rules.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make motion to waive. I made the request in the interest of a citizen who did reach out to me 24 hours ago, but I failed to convey to the chair that request from the citizen.
All right. So motion made by Commissioner Proctor, second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Comban. All those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye. Any oppose? Motion made to pull item five by Commissioner Proctor, is there a second?
Oh, we don't need, we don't need a motion to pull it?
We do.
If you're ready to do it. Yes, yes. Motion made by Commissioner Proctor to pull item number five, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Welch, any objection? Seeing none, sure it is pulled. So any speakers on item five will save it?
Yes.
So we hear citizens to be heard on nunnaging the items and consent, other than item five.
Mr. Administrator. First speaker, Stephen Sardellis.
Hello, everybody. So I just firstly want to say thank you for giving me this space to come up as an individual. My name is Stephen Sardellis. I'm the Director of Hotline Programs with 211 Big Bend. I think most of you are familiar with us at 211 Big Bend, but just in case you're not, we're a nonprofit agency based here in Tallahassee, Florida. So, on behalf of 211 Big Bend... So, on behalf of 211 Big Bend, I want to thank the commission for facilitating my time to come up here today. Uh, we're here today because September is recognized nationally as Suicide Prevention Month. So 211 Big Bend does a lot for the community. We encounter people in crisis on the daily. One of our guiding philosophies is that nobody should have to go through crisis alone, and we offer human connection and understanding to people who are isolated, to those who have suffered for so long that suicide seems to be the only option available to them. So, 211 Big Bend, we can help these kinds of people, and we do frequently, every day in fact. In a given year, we can help at least twenty-five people who have initiated a suicide plan. So in a given year, we help interrupt twenty-five suicide attempts on average. Okay? So we literally do help save lives. If we factor in how many conversations we have and how many people we help de-escalate from an acute crisis, then we can confidently say that we help hundreds of people choose to stay alive in a given year. So not only do we literally help save life, we help preserve life as well. So again, by giving us this space, the county commission is taking one of the many possible actions to help spread awareness on the problem that is suicide. Um, so, you know, of course, I will also thank the commission for, um, helping oversee funding for our agency. 211 Big Bend does have, uh, a few different funding, uh, sources, but, um, city and county help us stay in operation. Um, so, in addition to enabling our time here, um, you're also letting me, on behalf of the agency, spread our message for everybody here in attendance and everybody who will, uh, reflect on what's been said today. So, if you are or you know somebody who is struggling with thoughts of suicide, there are dozens of strangers who are ready to be that person to listen to you and to connect with you. If you are local, you can reach those people by dialing 211 at any point in the day, we're 24/7. And then if you're not local, or if you don't have a local phone number, you can dial 988 to reach the same exact kind of service. So that's all I had for you today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Administrator.
Wyatt Hendricks, to be followed by Ann Hendricks. Wyatt Hendricks, there we go.
My name is Wyatt Hendricks. I live at thirteen fifty-seven Tom Still Road, um, which is on Lake Munson. There's been a number of things going on lately, and, um, as a director of Friends of Lake Munson, Inc., we have a few asks. One, we would like for you to end the drawdown. Two, support EPA Superfund Site Assessment. Ask for state management of Lake Munson via FWC. Issue an RFI for sediment removal, and hold a joint city-county Lake Munson Capital Cascades or Stormwater Workshop, which is a thing from the past that you guys said you were going to do, but you never did. The problem is that the people who own the property around the lake have no confidence, not just because of people who are in office now, but this has been going on for thirty-five years. The lake has PBCs, which are carcinogen. If I took my pickup truck, stopped in front of your house, and unloaded all the trash out of it, you would probably expect me to come pick up my stuff and take it out of your property. The net result over the last thirty-five years is that you, that the lake has become polluted, and that is directly because of decisions made by the city of Tallahassee and Leon County. It is time to do your jobs. This idea of going to the, this whole thing over and over and over again has got to stop. And there are higher authorities that can make it stop, but you guys are running out of opportunities. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker.
Ann Hendricks, to be followed by Nita Marlene Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Hendricks. I live at thirteen fifty-seven Tom Still Road in Tallahassee, and, um, I'm his wife, and I live there with him on Lake Munson. And first of all, I want to say, wow, this commission, just in the presentations that have been done today, that I've sat here and witnessed, and I look at the agenda items and everything that's on there, I applaud you. I really do. I applaud you for the work you're doing for this community and for the things that are getting done. And I know you can't please everybody, but, um, I'm here to speak directly to a piece of information that was sent out by Commissioner Caban. Um, I don't know why it was only sent to the people around Lake Munson and not to the entire district. I understand that this flyer was sent to about two hundred and two hundred and twenty-five people in the Lake Munson area, and it says, be cautious of disinformation. And so I ask you, Commissioner Caban, what disinformation that you listed A, B, and C, you cite no sources for this? You cite no sources for a possible sinkhole, habitat degradation, and suspending toxic sediment, because dredging is not good. I mean, there's no source on this, and then you say, we, our water quality is continually meeting and surpassing state standards. I, 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 I have a hard time believing that, because if you just look out my back window, my back porch, Lake Munson is drained, it's got trees and all kinds of things growing in it, and I have seen reports back to nineteen fifty-something, I mean, we, as my husband stated, and I know it is not this commission's total responsibility, because the can has been kicked down the road by previous commissioners and boards, and that's not your doing, but this problem is not going away. And I feel like people that have asked me about this, this was very offensive. Basically, I felt like you were just telling me to shut up, because you didn't like what I was saying. So you said, be cautious of misinformation. I mean, just, just the way this was sent out, I thought was, um, offensive, and people that I've talked to didn't understand why it was sent out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Nita Marlene Davis, to be followed by Max Epstein.
Feeding dogs.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address for record, please.
Yes, Nita Marlene Davis, one-one-one-one, East Paul Russell Road. Um, I'm going to start out by showing a picture, two pictures, how can I do that? Can you help me set this up?
Matt, Deborah. Thank you.
Oh, okay, the first picture is Blue Sink. And if you're from Tallahassee, especially the south into Tallahassee, uh, what do I do? Okay, you will recognize Blue Sink, but you probably won't recognize Blue Sink. This is Blue Sink, guys, how about that? Um, this is the Canary and the Coal Mine. This is where we all, not maybe all of you, you might, might all been raised in Tallahassee, but this is where everybody swam, all the kids, all the adults, and yes, there were tragedies like anywhere over the years, so I don't want to hear about that. Um, that's a way of dismissing it, but it was clear, clear, glassy blue. It's right down from Lake Munson, right up from, uh, uh, Eames, it's right up from Eight Mile Pond, it's a skip and a jump on Wakala Springs. This is on the way to Wakala Springs through the Aqua Four, from Lake Munson. Now, the second picture I want to show, just flip it over. This, this is in my backyard. This is the millstone from Lake Munson. This, I mean, we don't all have memories of what it was. I have the memories. I'm old. I remember Lake Munson from the forties, the fifties, the sixties, the seventies, the eighties, and nineties, and here we are in twenty-twenty-three. I went to the county environmental forties in the nineties, and the county said at their environmental forum, and that Lake Munson didn't matter because it was a man-made lake, and then it was dismissed off the agenda, and they went on with other environmental, uh, issues in the county. So I've watched this, where the two pillars are, the big two pillars on Crawfordville Highway, that was the entrance to my grandma's house. She ran a fish camp out there for years, back in the forties and in the early fifties, until they started really dumping on it. Leon County and the city are responsible for this. They made it, and they need to undo it. They dug that slough to drain into Lake Munson. This was not some kind of like natural thing that happened, that everything drained. This was what we did. This is racial, environmental injustice, because it was black people, and it was poor white people that lived on the south side, and you're still doing it with Henrietta. Henrietta is either a sinkhole or a lake, depending on what, you know, the flavor of the month or the day. And it's really, really sad. I re, my father fought, well, he was in the Marine Corps, I'm, I'm, I want to wrap this up. He was in the Marine Corps for thirty years. He got his first pair of shoes when he was fourteen. He was raised up there on the fractional line, okay? His family was here, settled here in eighteen twenty-six. He went off the Marine Corps, fought in the Pacific as a Marine. He came, he, he saved his money, he bought that, all that acreage, including where the, uh, the, uh, I'm sorry, the dam is, our family owned that. He bought that money from what he saved up from being in the Pacific. He, he bought it for his mom to run a fish camp, which she did, so she would have an income. He came back when he retired from the Marine Corps after thirty years and three wars, and he came back to what Tallahassee and Leon County did to his property that he thought he was going to be able to retire on. This is my father.
Ma'am, I need you to wrap up.
I will, and, and you can understand the passion and the resentment I have seen. I have lived it, I have seen it, I have witnessed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Final speaker, uh, in this section of the agenda, Max Epstein.
Hello, everyone, thank you very much. Um, just wanted to address a few issues here. Number one, we would like you to end the drawdown. Uh, we have some information for you here. Um, but we did receive a letter from the county talking about how Lake Munson would be considered a low-risk site, according to the EPA. Well, I called the EPA, and they said they have not done an assessment, and asked me, why don't we know about the PCBs since they are federally regulated? Um, we would like you to support an actual assessment of the lake by the EPA, but fortunately, citizens can initiate this process. Um, we've also been told that this drawdown will help with our nutrients, right? Uh, the county points to a twenty-ten drawdown study that shows our findings suggest that sediment can be accomplished at low cost by management drawdown. Well, you didn't look at the second part of the sentence that says, however, due to enriched phosphorus, an aggressive restoration tool would be needed to further reduce it in the system. You're saying that FGS, FDEP said not to dredge. Well, I contacted them, they said they never said that. We don't recall being asked to issue a statement. We were asked by the county to determine possible sediment disposal options in case the county removes it. Uh, what else happened? The county asked them to pursue finding sources of PCBs in Lake Munson and their several sites known in the drainage basin. Well, TerraCon, you're going to hear on Agenda Item Five, they were hired by the city, they said, no, don't look up there. And if you actually go and look at DEP's actual sediment study, it's pointed to page eight. Page eight says, uh, that Lake Henrietta is newly created, and the contaminants coming in are from new sources. Upstream sampling may help identify these sources. But again, TerraCon was hired by the city to say, no, we don't have to find these sources. And they actually recommended what you should do next, which is to perform more testing. Do more sediment samples and look throughout the cores. They tested the top and the bottom, and they found all the contaminants in the top. They said, keep testing, go down by down, see where they are. This could be useful in determining how and to what depth sediments should be removed. Does that sound like DEP says not to remove sediments? So this is Lake Munson, I only have thirty seconds left here. So you can see the drawdown around the edges, it has seen some compaction, that's good. All the stuff in the middle is not getting anything, and we're in the middle of the rainy season, and it's washing all this stuff straight through the lake, where the heaviest amount of sediment is. This is the arsenic that's flowing in and out of the lake right now. They say the contaminants don't move. Well, your own data says that's not true. It also is picking up nitrogen and phosphorus. It's twice the level of, of Wakala Springs, uh, goals coming out, and look at the total phosphorus it's picking up. This is not a great thing for our city, our county right now. I will defer and come back to number five unless you want to give me an extra minute to finish here, but, um, you really need to think about it, and the account that we have gotten from FWC versus what the county statement, they are completely different. Those gates should never have been opened. It washed sixty square miles of rain down the drain, straight to Wakala Springs, and we should have been talking about it right now. So, thank you, I'll come back for item five.
Any other speakers?
None.
All right. Commissioners, motion for consent? Consent moved by Commissioner Caban, second by Commissioner Welch. All those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries without objection. Item number five, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number five, seek your appointments to Housing Finance Authority Science Advisory Committee and the Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. We have one speaker on this item, Max Epstein.
Max Epstein, name and address for record, please, so you get three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, Max Epstein, one thousand one San Luis Road. So, uh, we brought this up because there seems to be a clear conflict of interest between Mr. Tom Lewis, who's being appointed to the SAC, and, um, is there any way I can get my PowerPoint back, please? Uh, to the SAC, because he said he has no contractual conflicts. Well, he was hired by Georgia Gas and Oil to do the, the stuff for Wakala Springs. You should ask Wakala Springs, or Wakala County's residents how they feel, uh, about TerraCon. They were also hired by the city to completely debunk the very good twenty-nineteen sediment study that you did, and they were also hired to do the city of Tallahassee's Brownfield, uh, program. So all those things drain into Lake Munson, but he doesn't have a conflict of interest. Um, and here, I want to go back to the lake here. I know we, the Munson Work Group, were actually criticized for not going to, uh, the cleanup, but for me, I would not have brought Boy Scouts out to stomp around on PCB-laden sediment. And they are moving right along, I see, you see the rabbit's foot over there on the right side. Um, we know most of this stuff is in the top six inches of the sediment, so I'm hope that they clean their boots off, or, you know, warn them about what's actually in the sediment. Every one of those red dots that you see right there violates residential standards. The, the, uh, orange dot, yellow dot is commercial standards. You couldn't build a house on Lake Munson, but we say it's fine. Okay, here's hydrocarbons, petroleum, barium, lead, and there are others, all in the sediment, and we say we can't remove it, it's just a lie. And y'all should talk to the EPA, pick up the phone, and call them, because this isn't going to resuspend sediment. Very specifically, it has to go through a lot of permitting. And we're just going to take a trip down memory lane for last minute here. Nineteen sixty-three, okay? First examination of this lake was made in nineteen fifty-six. At that time, the entire lake had the appearance of a bowl of split pea soup. The last visit, the same condition, great quantities of single-celled algae piled up along shore. Now, they did this, uh, study in sixty-three, and they found to dredge Lake Munson and do more sewage treatment. Well, why, why did this happen in fifty-six? Leon County and the state partnered together to see if the newly opened St. Augustine branch was polluting them. City officials- the newly opened St. Augustine branch was polluting them. City officials have been of the opinion that the effluent has been beneficial to Lake Munson. The next year, forceue the city and county because of stormwater backing up typhoid fever. 1960, algae growth, not raw sewage. Maybe it's the same thing. 66, the board hears Munson complaint. The area has great potential, and our county needs it. With a little engineering foresight, could be the recreation best in the county. In the seventies, we knew, and it's my last two slides, we knew that the land was depressed because of the pollution, and we knew the county engineer said it could have gone to Lake Lafayette, but Lake Munson presented the least resistance, literally and figuratively. And the last slide here is just a tribute to Margaret Fogg, who took over in the seventies. And up until 2015, she was eighty-eight years old, still writing zings in the paper to clean up Lake Munson. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioners?
Item number five is appointments to Science Advisory Board, the HFA, as well as Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. The speaker just said that he believes that Tom Lewis, who was my appointment, who was asking for reappointment, is conflicted out from being able to be reappointed. I'm thinking staff has checked that, Madam Attorney?
So whenever someone applies to serve on a committee, council, board, et cetera, they fill out a questionnaire. Nothing on the responses to that questionnaire triggered the requirement that this applicant fill out a conflict of interest form. To the extent there is a conflict of interest, you'll see it in another appointment item on this agenda. Conflicts of interest are waivable by two-thirds vote of the board. But to your question, nothing in the applicant's application triggered the need for any sort of disclosure or waiver.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. As I see it, he's been a member now for a while, since nineteen, and he has missed one meeting that I see of, that he's been absent from. If the board so chooses to not approve his appointment, it's up to you guys. He was an appointee. He has to be reappointed. He's had good attendance. He's missed one, well, actually, one, two, three meetings since 2019. So I did put in for his reappointment. County attorney said there was nothing that triggered per his application, so I saw no problem there. It's the board's pleasure. I don't really want to go from here. So I'm looking for a motion for staff recommendation on this, on approval of all appointees, or if you want to approve too and have more discussion on the other, on the SAC appointee, I'll take that as well. But I'm looking for a motion. Motion for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Comban, seconded by Commissioner, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair. Discussion. Seeing none of those in favor, the motion indicated by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries without objection. Next item, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number thirty-five is a status report on the county's comprehensive coordination, preparation, and response efforts to Hurricane Idalia. Commissioners, I wanted to place this on your agenda tonight, under separate cover. It's been distributed to you as soon as possible after the storm, understanding that there's still a lot happening in the aftermath, especially in our neighboring counties. Also, you'll notice to my right in the audience today, we've got our county, many of our county lead folks assembled here, as well as a lot of our community partners that were activated during Idalia. Needless to say, there were hundreds of people behind them working in this event. And again, I just wanted to provide you a status report. The board was very engaged throughout the storm, but I thought, again, in very proximity to the event, it would be good to have a status report brought to you all. Commissioners, as everybody knows, we avoided the brunt of Hurricane Idalia, which was a historic storm, and the impacts ravaged areas of the Big Bend and into Georgia and through the nation's east coast. As you all know, we came very, very close. In just a few minutes, I'm going to ask Matt Cavell and Kevin Peters to share a little bit more about the county's efforts to prepare for Idalia. While we experienced relatively little damage, commissioners, we still executed our most extensive and exhaustive coordination and preparation efforts to date. And that's really saying something for us here in Leon County. You all recall our thorough after-action reports after Hermine and Irma and Michael, where we had three hundred recommendations and three hundred findings and two hundred recommendations that were put in place following those events. And they did, in fact, make us more resilient, more responsive, and more ready to deal with Hurricane Idalia. Just to tick off a couple of things, commissioners, here, in terms of our operations related to Hurricane Idalia, we had our largest sandbag operation, fully staffed by Public Works. We had our largest shelter capacity activation in history in coordination with Leon County Schools, American Red Cross, and the Florida Department of Health. We had our farthest-reaching public information and disaster readiness campaign with up-to-the-minute updates on every platform and actually millions of impressions throughout the event. We prestaged ambulances. We prestaged our Public Works crews out in the county for our quickest response ever to deal with a lot of the issues that we dealt with immediately following the storm. Emergency management was already coordinating with, and we had plans in place to open five different points of distribution. You'll remember those from many of our previous storms for water and food and essentials to open immediately following the event. Ice, water, essential. Thankfully, the state reallocated those resources to where they were needed in other areas. We kept nursing homes and assisted living facilities informed of our potential impacts here, and much, much more that Kevin and Matt will share in just a minute. Commissioners, again, we could go on and on about the coordination, the cooperation at every level of the organization, but also with our partners. All of our nearly a thousand employees at the county, in coordination with over a hundred partner agencies, nonprofits, stood ready to help our community recover. But thankfully, I'm introducing to you tonight, commissioners, a report on how we prepared for the worst, but experienced what for our community was really the very best-case scenario in terms of Idalia. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Matt, just to talk a little bit more about our activation of the EOC. And again, as I mentioned, you can see, we're joined here by many of our team leads and community partners. With Matt, and again, this would be very brief, commissioners, but again, with, given the relative proximity of the event, just wanted you all to have this information. Matt?
Thank you, Vince, and Chairman, commissioners. As the administrator has said, if you kind of look to my left shoulder and then just scan to the right end with Nikki, all of these folks had an incredible amount of work to do during the activation for Idalia, and this is only the highlight portion of them. Now, you thought this chambers was full with the FSU women's softball team. Just you wait if we brought in the thousands of folks who end up activated for an emergency operations center. And I just want to give you just a very, very brief snapshot of that, because, again, we train to fight heavyweights in emergency management. We trained to fight Mike Tyson, and you're going to hear a little bit about how all of that preparation made us well-prepared for Idalia. And I'm thankful to be here, not talking about the ongoing recovery operations here in Leon County. So, all that said, as the administrator said, most comprehensive and full activation of the emergency operations center and all of our related plans that we have ever done. And I say all that knowing that emergency management has a whole bunch of acronyms, from FEMA to ICS structure to NIMS, because I'm going to get my JIC and my PIO with these ESF, all that. I get it. I understand all that. All these folks know exactly what every single letter I just said meant. But the ones that matter most to us here is really kind of J O B. This is our job. This is the community that we live in, and we love what we do, and it is what we train year-round to do. Again, we hope not to fight a storm as powerful as what Idalia had been forecasted to be, but we are ready for it, and we are better off, because of what the administrator has said, due to the lessons learned from previous storms. And we will, yet again, learn from this storm. It has lessons to teach us still. Kevin's going to talk a little bit about the storm and how we were watching it, even when it was in an entirely different ocean. We talk a whole lot about the Atlantic. Kevin was actually telling me about it when it was in the Pacific Ocean, which I thought, Kevin, that's the wrong ocean. We maybe need to look elsewhere. But he wasn't wrong. So what we're going to talk about today, again, real brief highlights, is the emergency operations center is staffed by a whole bunch of folks from Anna Padilla, Kevin Peters is the emergency management director. They have coordinated hundreds of partners for Idalia. They continued not only to do that after landfall, but they had done it even into the weekend, prior to landfall. So from bookmark sites, from end to end, they stayed busy with us. In addition, they, at the emergency operations center in coordination with partners, reached out to nursing homes to make sure that they have their power plans in place with the anticipation of long outages. So that is something that we work with our partners to make sure is done from each and every assisted living facility to nursing home here. And additionally, that brings us to the Public Works folks, where you see Andrew and Brent over my left shoulder. So we had, as Vince had mentioned, so many trucks in the field and so many crews that I swear they were catching the trees as they fell, and caught them and cut them up and put them in the backs of dump trucks. They were ready, unlike ever before, to be able to meet the demands of Idalia. Now, that was light, but it doesn't mean that the plans and preparation were any less heavy. And I say all that with a hot-off-the-presses announcement for our Public Works folks. So FEMA just recently had green-lighted us and said that we would get reimbursement for curb-side debris collection. You'll be hearing more about this, commissioners, coming up in the next day. So tomorrow, you'll receive more information about what that operation looks like. But hey, broad strokes, if you have anything in your backyard in Leon County unincorporated area, bring it to the curb. We'll have folks next week that'll get it gone. That's all that needs to happen, and we'll be communicating that very simply to folks with no other changes in operations for other things. Just get it to the curb. Our folks will remove it. Curb it, don't burn it. Again, we'll go back into some of these old things from Michael. We'll get back into the groove of it. But our operation will be complemented by debris contractors removing things from the curb, both in private roadways and public roadways. So, moving on from that, I want to also point to Officer Resource Stewardship, Points of Distribution, John Leeds. If your Publix is shopping, it's a pleasure. We try to make sure that our Points of Distribution are the same thing. We pushed through millions of bags of ice and MREs through those Points of Distributions, and we had to do zero this time. But all the planning and coordination is a year-round process with John Leeds and site assessments before the storm hits. So that's a big shout-out to Maggie's team. Turning to Chad, EMS responded to every call for service. We were out there for more than five hundred requests during the time of the hurricane and the activation, and that was all in coordination with the Consolidated Dispatch Agency's Dave Odom, where we answered thousands of calls for not only information, but requests for assistance, non-emergency work. That leads us then to sheltering operations. As Vince said, more capacity than we've ever had before, thirty-two-hundred to four thousand or so folks. And if you really squeeze them, it'd be five thousand people we could house just here. That sheltering operation is a credit to Leon County Schools, American Red Cross, and most especially, the Florida Department of Health as it relates to special needs sheltering, which was, again, the best-run operation that we have had the opportunity to bear witness to in emergency management. So can't be said enough about the Florida Department of Health in Leon County in managing that operation. And then, in addition to that, our furry friends also are supported by Kara Aldridge at Animal Control. Again, all seven locations are pet-accessible. That is, again, all of those works that we put into the field is all of our planning and preparation. The damage assessment, Barry Wilcox, Scott Brockmeyer, those folks, Ned Cake from GIS, are all the people that put things into the field to make sure that we do the assessments, that we made the case. What I just mentioned about the breaking news for FEMA for public assistance, for getting that from the curb, is because of this immediate connection we have with FEMA and the assessments we have about where debris is and where the hardest-hit areas are. And that ongoing coordination with our nonprofit partners from 2-1-1 Big Bend, which is here behind us, to Shinkton Shop to make sure that it all happens, continues days after the storm and ramps up prior to the storm. So can't say enough about Shinkton, 2-1-1 Big Bend, and many of the partners that were here. I don't know if Jacob Reiter's still here from America's Second Harvest, but again, big partners to make it happen. And last, communications commissioner, we say, we say all the time, no one's ever said they've been talked to too much during a disaster. No one's ever had too much information in hand. Well, guess what? We wanted to put that to the test. Dare me, and we'll see what we can do. And in communications, this was easily the most comprehensive communications effort we've done in the shortest window of time any hurricane has allowed us to have. So within two days of proper and quick spin-up, we had more than eight million impressions. But here's what I want to take away from that. We always say eight million impressions, ten million impressions. That's a lot of impressions. But if you put all of the time, of all the individual screen time we got in front of people, and this is just screen time, that is one hundred and fifty thousand hours of screen time, whether it be on national network, local network, whether it's listening on the radio, one hundred and fifty thousand hours of individual engagement with our community and the nation at large, which is seventeen years, if you string it from end to end, seventeen years and two days worth of media production and replication. And that just doesn't happen. And that's a credit to folks behind me, like Kiana Gilly, who is exceptional at leveraging those resources, and of course, Elena from Tallahassee Democrat. All of that said, this activation was one of the most extensive that we have had, for sure. It is in response to one of the most aggressive and fast storms that we've seen in the Gulf. And I want to turn it over now to Kevin to close out real briefly about what this storm looked like, where it went, and then how we, as a learning organization, as the administrator has said, will continue to take away lessons from this and incorporate it into our year-round training. So, again, let me turn it over to Kevin. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Yes, as Matt advised a little bit earlier, this was a peculiar storm. We were looking at it while it was in the Pacific Ocean, more than seven days before it actually ended up making landfall in Florida. But about seven days to landfall, we got that first outlook for probability of development in the Gulf of Mexico on Wednesday, August 23rd, 8:00 p.m. We didn't know it was seven days to impact at that point, but we were only looking at a twenty percent chance for development in seven days. Little do we know, it's going to be a category four. As things moved along, by Friday, August 25th, National Weather Service identified it as Invest 93. That's when they start investigating an area of low pressure. Now, again, that puts us five days to landfall, which we didn't know at that point, but we were looking at an eighty percent chance for development over seven days. Going into Friday evening, we're all leaving work, looking ahead, the next week was going to be the week before Labor Day. You know, I talked with Matt Mitch, the county administrator, informed our leadership to, hey, look at next week for your staffing plans, just in case, because we knew something could develop. The model spread at this point, when they started giving us some model data, was a storm that could be anywhere from Panama City down to Sarasota. So it was a widespread going into the weekend. Advisory One came out Saturday evening, 5:00 p.m., August 26th. It had a major split between the two big models, the GFS, which is the American model, and the European model. GFS had it kind of westerly, going towards Panama City, the Euro, kind of to the east, into the Big Bend, where ultimately, we did see the landfall. Now we're talking about four days to landfall. Now we have a forecast tracking. Now we can really get an understanding of where the storm is going. And all these activities that Matt talked about, all these team members that came to bear, we started getting them on the phone, started highlighting them to the hazards, and getting those updates from the National Weather Service. By Monday, 5:00 a.m., things started happening very rapidly. 5:00 a.m., we had our tropical storm watch, which means conditions for tropical strength are possible within the next forty-eight hours. Good thing with the models, both of the main models, the GFS, which is the American, and the Euro, were east of Tallahassee, but the GFS was still pretty close to the Leon County area. The Euro was a little further away. That was going to be the case throughout the day on Monday. A little later that morning, on Monday, 11:00 a.m., we went from tropical storm watch, which means conditions possible, to that warning for tropical storm warning at 11:00 a.m., which meant we could expect those tropical storm conditions within the next thirty-six hours. Again, we're seeing some rapid changes through Monday. We're bringing more people into the emergency operations center. We're stepping up that coordination process with our conference calls. By Monday afternoon, 5:00 p.m., we're up to a hurricane watch, which means we could expect hurricane conditions within the next forty-eight hours. So Monday, the 28th, a day of rapid change with our weather forecasts. Tuesday morning, 5:00 a.m., twenty-four hours to impact, there was a westward shift in the model guidance overnight. So this thing looked like it was going to be much closer, much more dramatic for Leon County. 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, August 29th, hurricane warning issued by the National Weather Service for Leon County. That means we could expect hurricane conditions in Leon County, seventy-four mile-per-hour winds or higher. Again, that's our decision point, talking with the school board, talking with leadership here with the county, full activation of the emergency operations center. Tuesday, 11:00 a.m., advisory, the storm due west of Key West in the Gulf of Mexico, only eighty-five mile- only 85 miles per hour at that point. We're being told this is going to be a very vicious storm. So the anticipation through the day Tuesday and into early Wednesday morning was for rapid intensification, and that is exactly what we saw. By 2:00 a.m., August 30th, now we're only talking about six hours to landfall, National Hurricane Center advises Adalia rapidly intensifies to a major hurricane. 120 mile-per-hour sustained winds. When we talk about rapid intensification, that's an increase of 35 mile-per-hour sustained winds within a 24-hour window. So the storm really jumped up from Tuesday afternoon at 85 miles per hour to 2:00 a.m. We're looking at 120 mile-per-hour storm. 5:00 a.m., two hours prior to the landfall, wind speeds were up to 130 miles per hour. The eye of the storm was only 90 miles south of Leon County. Again, a very intense situation developing. This was Category 4 at this point, actually, two hours to impact. And at 7:45 a.m., Adalia made landfall, actually as a Category 3. It had some slight weakening to 125 miles per hour at Keaton Beach. So you look at some of the information, and that little bit of an eastward jog, it followed basically what the European model had been telling us. It was a little bit further east of Leon County. Through all of the advisories, we tracked the trends, monitored our probabilities for the different wind speeds, the tropical storm force and the hurricane winds, used the data and the science to make good decisions with our activation. And just to close it out with some of the stats, the maximum sustained gust, which is an instantaneous wind reading, observed in Leon County, 54 miles per hour. Our maximum sustained wind, and that's an average, two-minute average, 42 miles per hour. That is tropical storm force sustained. Again, tropical storm force winds are 39 mile-per-hour or higher. And we had a maximum rainfall of 4.01 inches of rain. So with that, just a few of the things from emergency management that we've learned through this, and just to echo some of the previous comments, we have great partnerships. Everybody worked well together. Similar to some of the comments that we heard about with the softball team, it's all about training. You can't be a success without training. The training works. Some of the pictures of our team up here, these are some new faces since our last big activation for Hurricane Michael. A lot of training in the last five years, that's right, five years since Michael. A lot of training's gone on, and we had a lot of new people who performed well. Some of the things we've learned from the counties to the east, logistics can be challenging. The work that John Leeds has done to prep for those points of distribution if they were needed. It's just proof that we were ready for this game if needed to be. Our counties to the east, you know, they had some challenges with logistics. Some tweaks we can do with our crisis management software, WebUC, again, to make the functionality even better. But one of the big things that I look forward to working on is to continue to engage with the National Weather Service on how they can continue to provide us good, valuable weather tools to improve our decision-making process. The first couple of days of this storm, as it was starting to develop, again, we were just seven days from landfall. We didn't have any official forecasts yet. So leverage the partnerships. If you recall, earlier this summer, we had the Hurricane Hunters from the National Weather Service and the U.S. Air Force here in Tallahassee. We have the relationships. We're going to leverage those to help try and develop, if we can, some better decision-making tools, not just for Leon County emergency management, but emergency managers across the Gulf Coast. With that...
Thank you, Kevin. Commissioners, just to wrap, let me just say, and I know you all know this, we've got, from Matt and Kevin, all the way across the organization to our community partners, we've got one heck of a storm team in place. Just a couple of years ago, you'll remember that FEMA designated Leon County the first hurricane-storm community in the country. And we say that, but don't get us wrong, we're humbled because storms will do that to you. And every storm exposes different vulnerabilities and tests our capabilities, and we learn a whole lot. And we're, just like in all of our previous storms, you can rest assured, Commissioners, we're going to learn everything from Adalia, and we're going to be stronger as a result. I want to just take a quick moment to thank Commissioners, again, for your engagement throughout the storm, especially our Chairman, Commissioner Maddox, for your accessibility throughout the storm. Want to thank our county attorney for all of the important work in the declaration, the local declared state of emergency. And Commissioners, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Indeed, I congratulate the staff, sense of readiness. And we're very fortunate that we didn't get the brunt of this storm. I guess, I think the Nebraska football team looked good in spring training. That was before they met the Seminoles. We could look good, but we really didn't meet Adalia. We didn't meet Adalia, it was just a spring game. But we looked like we were ready for it. And I'm glad that our Chairman of County Government, Florida's a stand-your-ground state, and he stood down and told Adalia to take another turn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for standing our ground for us. I wanted to ask functionally, it seems like operationally, the county puts so much muscle in storm management. And it seems that the city primarily focuses on electricity and making sure that there's restoration. But what is it, percentage-wise, and I know electricity matters, but we had more outages relative to the actual impact of a storm. The severity of the storm was not there, but the power outages were. And I can't reconcile that, that problem. But what is it, besides electricity, does the city do, the storm stuff? And it seems that we do so much. Maybe I'm aware of what we do because you presented, but it looked like us alone, and they just have trucks trying to put the lights back on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it is a highly coordinated effort, and it requires that between us and the city. From an emergency management standpoint, of course, statutorily, we are lead in that regard, and Kevin can tell you a little more. Kevin, why don't you just come up for real quick? But Kevin not only coordinates our counties, but also, what's the region again? Remind me.
Yeah, we're Region Number Two in our emergency management structure.
How many counties?
We, 10 counties now.
Yeah, so I mean, so we coordinate also 10 counties, which not a lot of people recognize, but we do, and Kevin does that year-round. And so, but it does take all hands on deck, and the city does play a very vital role throughout our activations. And Kevin can probably illuminate that a little more.
Yeah, yeah, so again, the infrastructure piece with electricity, keeping the water, wastewater pumping systems operational for their municipal water system, the Tallahassee Fire Department, the search and rescue aspects that they provide for damaged structures and fire suppression. With, these storms do have lightning. Lightning strikes occasionally. The electrical restoration, sometimes you have fires. So certainly, the capabilities there. Tallahassee Police with traffic control and security with aiding at some of the shelter locations. Some of the customer service operations with the city. We're partnering with our shelter operations, with the Health Department. A lot of folks with the special needs shelter are electric-dependent residents, so they're able to ping those electric meters at those homes. So we can make sure that those folks have the electricity they need when they go home. So those are some of the main operations. Again, similar to Public Works, they do have their road crews that clear roads within the city of Tallahassee, too, within their jurisdictional boundaries.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President.
I appreciated the incremental increases of sites, and I was glad to see the South Side records come into the fold of potential sites. It's my thought that the special needs site at Florida High School, I don't think that that's widely known. I think that we need to lift up Florida Highway down there on Tram Road. It's my perception that many people probably don't know where Florida High's special needs site is located. And I'm not sure what makes it the designated special needs, but we possibly might want to consider Civic Center or something more central in town as that special needs site. But overall, as I observe the handling of the execution of integrated parts and elements for storm management, I was impressed, I really was, with this go-around. We live in this storm area, and I think it was a play once, it said, "Your arms are too short to box with God." And we do our best to manage when things get a little out of... We recognize that we're up against the denity when these moments occur. And there's not a hell of a lot that hell can do when heaven is speaking. So we salute and give commendations to your fans and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner O'Keefe, followed by Commissioner Comban.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. We had the FSU softball team in here, and they had that big trophy. And I'm going to work on getting hurricane trophies out for all of y'all because you certainly deserve it. And while that may be exciting and what's on TV, what you do is critical. And so I want to make sure we acknowledge that. I want to thank Kevin, Matt, Chad, Brent, John, and everyone else that in-between for doing that. There's a... Especially for your commitment to learning, because you're clearly the best. But even after we respond well, here we have, we're analyzing it. A lot of people, maybe including myself, would take a win and move on. And I just think that we benefit as citizens. As Commissioners, we benefit because we know our responsibility is being met to our citizens because of you, but as citizens, we benefit from the certainty you provide. And I also want to especially thank Matt and his team on Communications, that incredible effort, because in times of uncertainty and possible misinformation, the certainty that you provide with clear, specific, accurate information really does a lot to keep cool heads as much as possible. And then, finally, I want to thank you especially for the great news of working with FEMA on debris pickup. That's something that constituents have reached out about a lot, and I know they'll be excited for that. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Comban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Growing up, being an athlete, not nearly as good an athlete as you, Mr. Chair, but my coach used to always say, you know, you find out the character and the quality of your team when you're down by eight with two minutes to go in the game. And I feel like that was a representation of Leon County and staff as we prepared for a storm to come through last minute. And I was thoroughly impressed to see people transition from positions to go to emergency management. I was impressed with the city of Tallahassee and how they restored utilities very quickly. You would see the crews out and the roads working day and night. Also, very impressed with our local partners in the community that stepped up. And so, Mr. Administrator, I know that you are yourself working around the clock, and I appreciate that, along with your team. I also appreciate, you know, the last-minute getting a storm bag facility in Fort Braden. I know that when I asked, you moved very quickly on that, and that gesture was very well-received by the community. So I just want to tip my hats off to the team. And through that process, made me very proud to be a member of this organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin, I just want to... Where's Kevin? There you go. Kevin, I just want to thank you and Matt and everybody, the hundreds of people that were working on this. You know, it's human nature. We tend to forget the disaster that doesn't happen. But what we all saw, and what I think the community saw in the days leading up to Adalia, was an incredibly well-running machine. And you've got an incredible team. And eventually, there will be a storm that comes along the path like Adalia and doesn't veer to the east, and it will hit us. And I think it's a foregone conclusion, that will happen at some point. But I know that you and your team are there to help us. And with the incredible communication we have, the prep, the recovery efforts, I know we've got a good team here that will respond to that and will help this community get back on its feet. So thanks to everything that you have done and all of your team. I also want to thank some folks, I don't think I've been mentioning just yet, which is the line crews for the city of Tallahassee, Talquin, and as well as the other utility crews that came in from out of town to come help us. After Adalia did, you know, come through with some winds and veer to the east, we had folks that were working from all over the state, but also the city of Tallahassee and Talquin, working very hard to restore power. I think people here can relate. If you lost your power at some point, it came back pretty quickly. And as Commissioners, I can speak for myself, when we had a neighborhood that went down, our neighbors would contact us, we would reach out to the county and the line crews, and they were on it. And they've got a list of priorities, you know, trying to go substation by substation. They've got that already pre-programmed in. But I felt, as a county commissioner, reaching out to the city and to the county, asking for these neighbors' help, they were very responsive to us. So I would make a call, and just, I think by coincidence, the line crews were arriving in the neighborhood that I was calling about within minutes. So thanks to all the line crews for city Tallahassee, Talquin, and elsewhere that came and helped us restore power. And then also wanted to thank, I also wanted to express gratitude to the people who have been helping our brothers and sisters to the east who were decimated during this storm. What we were spared, they received. And, you know, our thoughts go out to them and wishing them a speedy recovery because it's going to take a long time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Most of a staff recommendation? I'm sorry.
I don't know if I think...
About you.
Yes, very briefly. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. County Administrator, and all of our directors and staff. This is just another demonstration of the great people that we have in charge in Leon County. And I think a demonstration of our county administrator's ability to select those individuals to do what needs to be done in times of disaster and, you know, in times of calm as well. We appreciate all of you, and we tend to forget that we expect you to keep us informed, keep us as safe as we can be. We expect the county administrator to give us play-by-play, which he did. He kept us informed daily, several times during the day, on the extent of what to expect from Hurricane Adalia. But we tend to forget that all of you are in leadership positions, even the county administrator, you have your own families, too. You are concerned about your family, but you're also concerned about the health, safety, and welfare of all Leon County citizens. So I just applaud you all for that dedication, for that concern, for the welfare of the entire county, and just congratulate you for all the hard work that you've done here in Leon County and, as Commissioner Mount said, reaching out to other counties that suffered more devastation than we did here in Leon County. So we blessed that it moved a little, the hurricane moved a little east, but it doesn't lessen all the dedication that you all put into preparation and making sure the county and the citizens were prepared for the impact of Adalia. So thank you again. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Castonova Nurse was outstanding in his reporting. And the news efforts by all the stations local were incredible. They had reporters all over these counties. I understand that reporters from outside of the stations participated. It was incredible. My question is, we border Georgia, Madison, Gadsden County borders Georgia, and Madison intersected with Lowns County, Georgia. Are the resources segregated between Georgia and Florida? Or is there an interwoven plan? Does FEMA preempt? Because I never remember anticipating holding hands and having prayer meetings with Thomasville or Lowns. But when Category 5 comes in, we really ain't got no boundaries. There's no Georgia, Madison, Thomas County, and nothing like that. How does that operationally occur with us being side by side and right in each other's face?
Mr. Administrator.
To summarize greatly, there is a highly coordinated system in place of local, state, and federal. And it works pretty seamlessly because, again, we all in this region and beyond anticipate these type events and train for them continuously. But as far as the relationships go and the assistance goes, especially the assistance from the federal government, again, highly coordinated, whether you're in the state of Florida or whether you're in Georgia, the plans are in place to ensure that that coordination and that continuity occurs and that those plans are... continuity occurs and that those plans are executed irrespective of borders.
In our radio system, do we share frequencies with Gadsden County, Madison County, all of that, and the ability for information to channel back and forth across counties, particularly Thomas and all of that? How does that work? Are we prepared? Or is it still a work in progress?
We do, well, very much so. And that's, that's kind of, and Matt, if you could come up for a minute, we're hardwired into the EOC with radio capabilities, and we have them embedded in, within the EOC with us. But Matt can also elaborate on the, on the plans that we have in place with a broad radio network through our emergency operations, planning, and communication. But Matt, you want to talk about that a little?
Yeah, exactly. So when we talk radio, we're kind of talking about two pools. And I want to give feedback on both. One is the first responder pool of radio coordination, which is run by FinNet, which allows interoperability between our regional partners to dispatch and manage resources. So that's one element. That's our operational respond and get work done. The other side is the communications effort where our folks are embedded in the EOC for one WFSU. So to be able to communicate timely information. In addition, we have a hard link within the Emergency Operations Center for all iHeart radio stations that can be streamed and then kind of come across our general radio airwaves, which then reach the entire region from that perspective. So regionally, yes. Public service and radio coordination, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion for staff recommendation, which is to accept the report? Moved by Commissioner, myron seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any objection? Motion carries objection. Commissioners, let's get through item number 36, and then we'll take a break. How do you feel about it? Annual report, Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I know that I'm up against the break, and but the chairman, you saw, he just gave me the green light. But you know me, I can talk fast. And Commissioners, this, this item seeks your acceptance of the 2023 Leon County Annual Report. I say it every year, Commissioners, this is required by Florida statutes, and it's my very favorite state mandate. Again, and I'm very, very happy to and proud to present to you on behalf of all the dedicated men and women of Leon County Government. Before you, Commissioners, I've distributed copies of the 2023 Annual Report. Commissioner Caban says that on the first page, it's the best-looking county commission ever assembled in Leon County Government. The county attorney disagreed with that, but no, she didn't disagree. She agreed with it. But Commissioners, it demonstrates the report, the almost 80-plus-page report demonstrates, of course, all of the ways Leon County strives to set the standard in public service. And as you know, we take that very seriously. And as we do each year, we've prepared a short video to promote the annual report and to share it with as many citizens as possible. And that's so important, Commissioners, because that format allows us to do that. And the achievements that we'll talk about today, the highlights that we'll talk about, the milestones, the progress, none of that would be possible without all the support, the input, and the active involvement that we get from our citizens. Commissioners, after the video, I'll delve into just a little bit more detail on a couple of the milestones. You'll notice that our annual report is aligned with and reflects our strategic plan. So I'll dive into a couple of the, I'll highlight milestones in each of the four strategic priority areas in our strategic plan. And with that, Matt, why don't we go ahead and cue the video? And I'll come back with the presentation in just a moment. Commissioners, as Kiana gets keyed up, I think you'll be, once again, just as proud as I am to be a part of Leon County. In 2023, Leon County continued to make great progress and serve our citizens while striving to set the highest standard for performance, fiscal stewardship, and best practices for local governments everywhere. The 2023 Annual Report highlights Leon County's commitment to investing in infrastructure, creating places for people and businesses to thrive, and building a culture of innovation and co-creation, all of which makes our county one of the South's best places to live, work, and play. This annual report to the Board of County Commissioners in our community demonstrates the importance we place in Leon County on having a clear vision and a culture built upon our core values and practices. Our dedicated employees take special pride in setting the standard each day by providing essential services like EMS, public works, parks, tourism, and so many others that serve and shape our community. And we did this and so much more in 2023, staying focused on our ambitious targets and bold goals for the organization and the community, including growing our local tourism economy, addressing pressing issues like homelessness and hunger, protecting our precious environment, and so much more. We also remain focused on executing our long-term strategy of building and diversifying our local economy, which resulted in the opening of Amazon. This one game-changing project alone brings more than 1,300 full-time jobs and $33 million in annual wages to our community with a $114 million economic impact each year. With that same commitment to ensuring our community's brightest future, Leon County continued enhancing our quality of life and protecting our precious water bodies like Lake Munson through the removal of hundreds of septic tanks in the south side and more. And because building community is all about building connections, we opened new green spaces and playgrounds in 2023. We also revitalized the neighborhood through our annual 9/11 Day of Service Project, held our award-winning Creative Equal with a frank conversation on race inequality, and continued building disaster preparedness and resilience at every level. As one of the South's best destinations, 2023 was another record-breaking year for our local tourism economy, with more than 2.3 million visitors, leading to a nearly $1.3 billion in economic impact. To keep this historic momentum going, we opened the county's new visitor information center downtown in a renovated rail station. Strategically positioned between businesses, hotels, campuses, and venues, this hub for visitor services will grow tourism and support the county's leading efforts in celebrating our community's bicentennial. Due to results like this, in 2023, our dedicated county employees received dozens of state and national awards for exceptional public service. These efforts not only continue to make our community better, but they also have been key to keeping Leon County among the most efficient and affordable counties anywhere. As we look ahead, we know we will continue to face the same challenges of communities and governments everywhere else. But at Leon County, we remain committed to listening to the people we serve, addressing the challenges we face together, and striving to be a place like nowhere else. Please learn more about all of Leon County's efforts this year on behalf of and alongside our community in the 2023 Annual Report. Commissioners, that annual report video is always a hard act to follow. And as you saw throughout the video, again, Commissioners, it's been a very productive year for the counties, who just hitting the highlights is never an easy thing to do. Commissioners, in my almost 30 years now with the county, I continue to be amazed at this time each year to see how it all comes together and the efforts of our, the tireless dedication of our team who drive very significant results, again, that we report on this time of year, and how we're able to do that year after year. But it's important to remember, Commissioners, that things, things like this don't just happen. And Commissioners, let me first, let me say at the outset here that none of what you'll hear today in the annual report or in my presentation would be possible without the clear and consistent leadership and guidance that we receive from this board. And I can't stress that enough. I say it every year, and when it stops being true, I'll stop saying it. But I also want to take this opportunity, as I do, as often as I can, to thank you, Commissioners, sincerely for believing in this organization and for believing in county employees. And I can't tell you how important that is. So with that, I have just a few slides, Commissioners, which will hit just a couple of the highlights in the annual report. Commissioners, as you know, we're now in our second year of our five-year strategic plan. The 2023 Annual Report highlights our progress on 67 strategic initiatives in your plans, so it'll look very familiar to you, and reports on specific five-year targets and bold goals for each of our four strategic priority areas. Again, because we align our annual report with our strategic plan, I wanted to highlight just a couple of milestones in the priority areas of the economy, the environment, quality of life, and governance. And as you'll see throughout the annual report, Commissioners, the execution of our plan is continuing to yield exceptional results for the community. And as we do each year, I will provide a more full presentation of the strategic plan to you at your annual retreat coming up in January. But first, Commissioners, in the area of fiscal stewardship, before I get into hitting just the highlights in each of the four strategic priority areas, fiscal stewardship obviously is critically important. It undergirds all of the milestones that we're able to achieve. And what you'll see on your screen, again, in terms of a highlight, the commission, again, this commission, again, balanced the 2023 annual budget with no increase in the general millage rate for the 12th year in a row. This was achieved in part through the key role that county employees play here at Leon County in driving efficiencies and innovations, not just during budget time, but year-round. In 2023, county employees identified another $500,000 in cost savings. That brings our total to over $60 million in cost savings identified by county employees over the last 10 years. This year, Commissioners, we also continue to implement our long-range fiscal strategies throughout the organization, but specifically in EMS and fire services, while alleviating our use of general fund revenues to support these critical public services. Once again, Commissioners, we ranked among, as you can see there, we rank among the most efficient counties in the state of Florida with the lowest net budget per capita, with one of the lowest employees per capita. And Commissioners, here's the, the big part of all, the important part of all, that is we do it with some of the highest levels of taxation off the tax rolls. So again, that makes it really saying something when you consider that. And Commissioners, because of our sound fiscal policy and our long-range fiscal planning, the county maintained Moody's highest credit rating for a county government. And as important as all of these efficiency metrics are, Commissioners, what we do at Leon County is more about, is much more than being efficient. It's about achieving real results with the resources that we have. And while I could go on and on about these real results that we achieved over the past year, again, like I said, I'll just hit a couple of the highlights that correspond with our four strategic priority areas. And first, in the area of the economy, Commissioners, again, you'll see on the screen, we have some pretty big achievements here to celebrate this year. To start off with, we did host a series of hiring sessions for over 700 local job seekers ahead of the upcoming opening of the Amazon Fulfillment Center. This, of course, is a continuation of our efforts with Amazon to land the largest private sector job creation effort in Tallahassee's history, generating, as you saw in the video there, 1,300 full-time jobs and a recurring economic impact of over $114 million. Building on this momentum, we also played a vital role in securing the North Florida Innovation Labs at Innovation Park. With this $24 million capital investment, this will generate 600 permanent full-time, high-paying jobs for a total economic impact of over $20 million. Again, as you saw in the video, the opening of our new visitor center, which to just underscore the emphasis that we place in growing our tourism economy. Again, couldn't be more excited about that. This new hub is located right in the center, again, of some of our community's most significant tourism assets. And because we take a balanced approach, Commissioners, with respect to the economy, we also continue to build our skilled workforce with the eighth annual, I can't believe, the eighth annual Leon County Works Expo, where we connected over 700 of our students with career opportunities and local training resources. And finally, Commissioners, we leveraged the CitySmart or the CityStart grant to lead the bacon Tallahassee initiative with the goal of increasing access to financial empowerment resources among our low-income residents in the community. These, of course, are just a few of the successes in the area of economy for 2023. Moving on to the area of economy or the area of environment, quickly, Commissioners, again, you know what we're doing here relative to septic to sewer. This is a, you've now heard it for a few years because we do have some longer-term goals. But again, we currently have an additional 250 septic tanks replacements currently underway. That's in addition to the 600 septic upgrades that we've recently competed, completed, and we're not done yet. In addition to our septic to sewer program, we've leveraged an additional $2.2 million from the state to launch our septic upgrade incentive program, which, of course, as you know, provides eligible homeowners up to $7,500 to complete septic tank upgrades. Commissioners, again, yes, we've developed a very comprehensive Lake Munson action plan, working with our local environmental partners to support our long-term water quality efforts for Lake Munson. We diverted, again, just to hit another quick highlight here in the area of the environment, diverted 600,000 additional pounds of household hazardous waste in 2023 alone, which is significant because it contributes to our five-year target to divert 3 million pounds of hazardous household waste. It's no wonder why in 2023, we received the designation of top 100 leader in sustainability in the U.S. And again, Commissioners, a whole lot more. Moving on to quality of life, Commissioners, we've continued to make great progress in the strategic priority area. Couple of highlights, launching the Summer Break Spot Program at each of the county's libraries to offer free healthy meal, meals to kids and teens throughout this past summer, which is just one of the many initiatives underway in partnership with Second Harvest to reduce food insecurity in our community. We launched the streetlighting program at the direction of this board to increase student and public safety at our school bus stops throughout the unincorporated area. And in addition to the county's investment of over $32.5 million toward homelessness over the past three years alone, Commissioners, in 2023, we leveraged another half a million dollars to provide day services and additional outreach services to reduce unsheltered homelessness and loitering and other impacts in our community. Also this year, Commissioners, we received the designation of Florida Trail Town from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, recognizing the county's commitment to our recreational offerings and enhance connectivity of our over 700 miles of trails. Commissioners, I was building to this one. So lastly, in this area of quality of life, Leon County responded to 49,000 calls for service with EMS. That's a record-high number. That's higher than even our calls for service during the pandemic. And our EMS team is truly the best in the state. But don't take my word for it, Commissioners. I'm happy to report to officially announce to you tonight for the first time that the Florida Department of Health has named Leon County EMS the 2023 Provider of the Year for the state. And yeah. And one of our very own EMTs was recognized as the 2023 EMT of the year, and you'll be hearing a lot more about that. Finally, Commissioners, in the area of governance, we continued to make organization-wide efforts to set the standard in public service, like you've heard a lot tonight, including with this most recent announcement with EMS. Just a couple of things. Again, I had here that I was going to talk a little bit about Adalia. I won't do that anymore. You get it. But so many things, from our own reorganizational efforts to planning for the bicentennial and taking a leadership role in the coordination of planning and engagement efforts ahead of the bicentennial celebration in 2024. We continued to grow the county's reach and citizen engagement with a record number of events this year, outreach efforts, meaningful opportunities for our citizens, not only to stay informed, but to really engage meaningfully as co-creators in our community. Once again, Commissioners, Leon County Government was recognized with eight additional National Association of Counties Best Practices Awards. That brings our total, as you saw in the video, to 103. So this was the year 23 where we reached, we reached the 100 mark. Yes, we're keeping score. In Leon County, Commissioners, as a wrap-up, that's a lot. I know it's amazing that I can do it all in one breath. But Commissioners, as you know, we just scratched the surface of what we've accomplished together and alongside our citizens here in 2023. I want to thank the board again for your leadership, and it's absolutely essential to everything that we do. Of course, I want to commend our Leon County staff, the hardest-working, working, most dedicated team in the business, and thank them for continuing to leave, to live every day our special culture in this organization. Again, just a reminder, Commissioners, the annual report, as well as the video, are available on our website, and we'll share it far and wide. And with that, Commissioners, thank you again. It concludes my report. And yes, we recommend option one. Happy to answer any questions.
Option one's been moved by Commissioner Pratt, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any comment? Commissioner Pratt, you have a poll? Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is outstanding. You can walk into the NACO Conference, you can go to the Florida Association of Counties Conference, you can go anywhere with this kind of report card, and we don't have to walk in with a bow down head. And we appreciate that, Mr. County Administrator. And in all things, we walk in, you allow us to walk in with this sense of feeling exceptional. And though we ourselves, we can do that because we have exceptional staff. Thank you. I've never had to feel some kind of way sideways about Leon County. And when you can walk in, you know, it's not bragging when it's true, you know? It's just absolutely not bragging. And I've gone through here, I browsed it rather quickly. On page 26, the county administrator, as I listened to him, failed to capture something very meaningful to me, and it has been throughout my career here. And page 26 of this book reflects something that he omitted talking about. And when you look at page 26, just the gradual look, the diversity of the senior staff, the black and the white, the men and the women, there's been improvement. And there is a balance. If you look at the right side, there's also Sister Candy Wilson sitting up. Sister Wilson, Sister Wilson, is that you in there, looking all prettified in there? And on that side, holding down that side of the page, Shenton, we're going to get him another picture next year. Bradwell, Julani, all of that, that right there is balance. He didn't say nothing about that. Look at the left side of that sheet, there's Kiana over there, smiling, pretty, Wanda, and all the rest of us, Rose, Rashonda. This right here, I appreciate. Look at the top of this thing. Nick is there, and Carolyn, and me. That right there is the balance. In a time where the DE and I, there's a policy in our state, is on life support. You read, as weak as I did, that the DEI course at Florida State didn't even materialize, was canceled. You didn't say it, Vince, but I want to salute you, the obvious, often needs no statement. But thank you for the obvious there on page 26. I support that. On page 31, it humpens to a point that has been raised by our colleague, District Five Commissioner, has lifted up that 27% of this budget of the property tax distribution is going to the sheriff and law enforcement. And then, as the corrections supervisor over to jail, another 20%. And I think that, I think that Commissioner O'Keefe's ask of us to look at 47% of the tax distribution from property, that nearly 50% of it is under the auspices and direct control of the sheriff, speaks to a need to examine. And those are the two things in the report. One, it gives balance to Vince's commitment to diversity. For me, and the other is to join in with the call coming months ago from Commissioner O'Keefe, looking at our money distribution at law enforcement. And if we didn't have that much going there, it certainly would give us an opportunity to raise the bar in the amounts distributed in other areas. Those are my comments and reflections, and I'll save and stop right there and allow the Commissioners to weigh in. Thank you, Vince.
All right. Motion on the floor for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Pratt, I think seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any other comment? Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I just wanted to take the opportunity, I didn't speak on the last item on the hurricane because I saw this one coming up, and just wanted to, I think it is important to, you know, give you guys an annual, you know, lap of excellence, okay? It really is a profoundly well-run organization, and it's because of the leadership and the rank-and-file folks who are out there doing the work. I work in another local government organization, the Leon County School District. And, you know, you guys are doing a really great job. They do a great job, but you guys do a really, really great job, okay? It's impressive. And I think that from the top down, I just want to, you know, echo the sentiments, but not repeat them. But do want to kind of pile on a little bit and just say, you know, whether it's public works or hurricane response, obviously, these reports are glowing, but I think they're rightly glowing. I think you deserve, you know, to really hold your heads high, and this is really a profoundly well-run organization. And I'll just continue to say that year after year until you disappoint me, which I don't think's going to ever happen, and certainly won't be disappointing the citizens of this community that we all serve.
I think I echo the rest of the board on saying job well done from leader, from our leader, leaders, our county administrator and our county attorney all the way down the line. So with that being said, all of the favorable motions on the floor came by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries out objection. We will take break until six, where we do public hearing.